The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
Next, I'd like Mary Franz to read our mission statement, and this is actually the first official reading of our new mission statement that was developed by the board over the course of last summer and earlier this fall as part of our new strategic roadmap. So I'll ask Mary to read that.
We ensure that all students are college, career, and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse community.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we have our open forum. We have a number of people that would like to speak. I'm going to take them in. I'm going to call them up in the order that we received the sheets. And if you would like to speak but haven't filled one of these out yet, you can pick one up and hand it to Sandy Heller, or you actually can speak and then fill your form out later also. First, I'd like to call up Jim Moore.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Is this where I sit? This is my first meeting.
Yes.
Okay, and I talk into here?
Yeah, if you could give us your name and address, and then try to keep your presentation to three minutes or less.
Three minutes, okay. I'm Jim Moore, 1410 Morris Avenue in Green Bay, and I went to grade school here at Annunciation, and high school, Premontry, and then the University of Green Bay here. My concerns is this seventh and eighth grade program starting football. I've been official for 40 years. I don't think anyone has been in this room has been around seventh and eighth grade football. I started in 1973, and matter of fact Senator Dave Hanson was the coach at Annunciation when I was a referee. So I know a lot, not about coaching, but I know what goes on. And I think we have a great program in Green Bay already with the private schools that have there's the Wolverines, the Alockway Buccaneers, Eastside, Edison, I think there's six, and St. Joe's. And I've been with that program too, and they're well established. The coaches aren't being paid. They're there because of the loyalty. And I don't think we have the numbers to add for schools, which I assume would be Lombardi, Edison, Washington, and Franklin. Safety is our number one concern as a referee, and I think that if the numbers are down, you're going to have safety issues. And how qualified would the first year coaches be? They'd have to come from maybe Pop Warner. I think Green Bay has a great football situation. We have Pop Warner on the east side, Pop Warner on the west side. Pop Warner, I believe, is from first to sixth grade. Then they go on to seventh and eighth, and they have to make a decision where they want to go. And as a referee, I think we'd be short of referees. They would be refereeing, I would say during the school year, Monday through Friday, and they have a hard time finding referees for the freshmen and sophomore games. There's usually four refs. You cannot hold a game if you only have two refs. The game would have to be canceled. You cannot play a game with two refs. Teams would have to go home, fans would have to go home, and that could happen. They're having trouble filling refs. And then there's the cost factor. We're about $180 a game. You have two games, that's $360 one night. So I think there's concern about referees. You need strong referees. This is a young program. Safety is the number one concern. And my reason being here is I think we have to think about the safety issue, what implemented with the referees, the coaches, and the qualifications that you would have. I would say this is something that needs time. I don't think we can do it this fall. I think this is something we need surveys. We need to ask kids, when you're a seventh grader, would you go to Franklin if they have a team? Or would you go to the Wolverines? Would you go to Alockway? Edison? St. Joe's? Eastside? And that's it.
All right. Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a clarifying question.
Okay, great. Thank you.
If I may, you said if numbers are down, it's a safety issue. Can you amplify that, please?
Yes, I'm glad you-- because I only have three minutes. I tried to make it as brief as I could, okay? Numbers, you need 11 on the offense. See, I read all I know what's going on as I see in the paper, and they mentioned something to do after the kids. Well, this isn't basketball where you need seven players. This isn't baseball where you need 12. You need 40 on a team. And you need 11 on offense, 11 on defense. Sure, there's some players that play both ways, but these are excellent players. Maybe two or three play offense and defense. But a safety issue, you want 11 offensive players, you want 11 defensive players. Now, you need subs. Now, there's been times where someone's injured, and I call the coach in and say, "Coach, we need someone else." I look, and there's only two players standing there. One's holding his ankle, and the other one's holding his shoulder. I'm thinking, wow, we need numbers. And I think that if you implement four new teams, which I haven't heard how many we're talking about, I think the numbers are going to be down. And you need a healthy squad. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. And just the format for the-- you're good. The format for the open forum, we do not respond or engage in dialogue with people presenting because a lot of times what's being presented is not actually on our agenda. But this will come up, the middle school football issue will come up later on in our agenda, and we will have a chance to be able to discuss the factors going into our decision. Next, I'd like to call Julie Olman.
Hello, I'm Julie Olman, 115 Crestview, DePere, Wisconsin. I attend in Green Bay public schools and have been employed by the district since 1998 as a high school language arts teacher and LMS. Currently, I'm the library media specialist at East High School. I love being in the library and working with students and staff at East. Today, I'm here to address challenges that secondary LMSs are experiencing because of the added responsibilities with implementation of the one-to-one netbooks. We also have some concerns about the nebulous nature of the tech coach position. I am aware that district administrators and committees are planning a revised tech coach document, and since I'm in the library, I would like to communicate to you firsthand my experiences and issues. For example, at East, beginning in November, I have filled out 81 netbook repair forms, and the following are added, often daily netbook tasks: troubleshooting problems, user error, user instruction, insurance, broken items, new students, leaving students, tracking missing netbooks, locating students, and returning repaired netbooks, permission slips, staff support, charging and checking out loader netbooks, software issues. This is not a comprehensive list. On some days, we look at cracked screens or talk to parents about the insurance deadlines they may have missed for an already damaged netbook. Other mornings, we look at netbook bags with a broken zipper or check the adapter to see if the problems are due to the charger or another piece of hardware. Some of these duties were anticipated, however, with the added position of the tech coach at the secondary schools, we believe these new tech problems will be the tech coach responsibilities. I was not even aware of this tech coach position until there was a brief mention of the job at an LMS department meeting. Then at East, after school one day in October, LMSs and business teachers and ITSTs attended a tech coach planning meeting, but like some other LMSs, I was not part of that group. Yesterday, I wrote in this prepared speech that I do not know if there is a written description of this paid position as a tech coach. I've asked this question in emails and meetings, but I've never received an answer. In fact, I asked someone who was hired as a tech coach what her responsibilities were, and her response was, quote, "We haven't heard because we haven't had a meeting lately." And she followed up by saying, "Even tech coaches would like to see a written responsibility list. Most of us have seen, have never seen anything in writing, but this afternoon I received a description of the position titled Instructional Technology Coach." Like other LMSs, we support the integration of technology in the curriculums and supporting it in our schools. We are eager to learn new technology and teach the students and staff. I'm asking that the tech coach position is revisited and revised and communicated to all secondary library media specialists, especially with additional personal computers that will be checked out to the incoming ninth graders in the fall 2013. Support and changes to this tech coach position are essential for our future success in supporting technology in our schools. There was one day in particular that I remember teaching a language arts class how to use district-supported presentation tools, and when I returned to my desk, eight netbooks were piled next to my computer awaiting my inspection and repair form creation. A teacher leaned over my desk and asked me, "When do you have time to be a librarian?"
Thank you. Thank you, Julie.
Could I ask that you leave a copy of that? Did you copy that? I'd like Mr. Smith and Dr. Witrock to have that as well, so make sure we follow up. I don't know if you've had communication with Mr. Smith or Dr. Witrock at all.
I have not. I will get them a copy.
Okay, that would be most helpful if we could get a copy of that. Thank you.
Next, I'll call up Aaron Vanonoben.
Good evening. My name's Aaron Vanonoben, 2563 Mattock Road in Green Bay. The Vanonoben family's been involved at Preble High School since the 50s. My dad went there, I went there, my kids all went there. We are very active at Preble. I recognize a number of people here. I read with interest the last couple days about what's going on with the middle school football programs. Somebody's fining $200,000 to fund them. And I agree with the middle school football programs. I think it'd be a great addition. I think the timing is wrong. Right now, we are trying to run programs at the high school and the middle school level that are inadequately funded. These monies could go to bring us up to speed with the conference that we now are in, to let us compete better with the other teams. If you talk to the coaches, they would all like additional assistance to get paid more money to pay for assistance. I am involved in the Booster Club for wrestling at Preble and at East. We were formed to raise money for additional items for wrestling. We now are using our money to put to things that we need. The district should serve our needs. We should serve the extras. We are now serving the needs. The money, I think, that we would use at the middle school level could shore up our programs, get them where they need to be, and after we get a good handle on all that, turn around and then take a look at the middle school programs and use a good base to run a good program. Looking at the numbers they have, being involved in other football programs, it looks like we're going to five, we're going to fund five programs, and they will also be inadequately funded. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Mike Williket.
Hi, my name is Mike Williket. I was a teacher and a football coach at Green Bay West for 20 years, and I finished my career doing the same at Bayport High School for 12. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of starting this junior high program in the city. I'm here tonight because I still care very deeply for Green Bay West. And I think it's about time that Green Bay West and the other schools get what all the other schools that they compete with already have, to make it a fair and even playing field. This isn't new to me. 14 years ago, I sat with the superintendent at the time, and I tried to do this back then, and it went nowhere. An example, at the time, Manitowoc had two junior highs, I believe it's Washington and Wilson, and both schools had junior high programs, and they fed Lincoln High School. It was two junior highs with seventh and eighth grade programs feeding one high school. I didn't think that was fair at the time. Now, with the addition of Bayport and Eschwabene and Plasky and DePere and their junior high programs that they have, it even makes it more of a disadvantage for the Green Bay schools when they have to compete against those schools in the surrounding areas. Mr. Nirit at the time asked me why I felt this was necessary, and one of the main things that I felt we needed it was to strengthen our sports programs, because I felt at the time that a lot of families were leaving the Green Bay school district and moving out to the, some of the other outlying schools like Eschwabene and DePere, Bayport, Plasky, and those types of schools. And I felt we were losing kids, families and kids from our school district. And I knew people at the time that I even knew that were doing it, and that was before open enrollment. And I can tell you right now, with open enrollment, it's even worse. About five years ago, the Player of the Year in Eschwabene went to, the Defensive Player of the Year went to Eschwabene High School. He was an excellent defensive tackle, and he would have went to West High, but he opened enrolled at Eschwabene. Why? I believe because Eschwabene's sports programs at the time were very good, and he wanted to play in that program. So what basically happened there, the best player in the conference left Green Bay West, seeking out better, a better situation. I can tell you, going out to Bayport and running our own youth seventh and eighth grade program had some great advantages. Now, I know that Green Bay has the Buccaneers and the Wolverines, and I know they're good programs and so forth, but there's some great advantages to having your own seventh and eighth grade programs that feed into your high school. I can go over those, but I know I'm limited to three minutes, but I would be happy to answer any questions on what those advantages are. I guess I'm here because I think it's important. I took the time to come in here and give my two cents for it because I feel it's important. And I guess all we're, I would think that the coaches are asking for an equal in their playing field with the schools that they have to compete with every week. And I know that you can go to any school in the Green Bay area and get a good academic education. But make no mistake, families are choosing schools because of athletic programs too. And if some of these other programs have things that the Green Bay school district doesn't have, it puts them at an advantage. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is, I think it's Paul Islandfeld. Did I read that right?
My name's Paul Islandfeld. I live at 3301 Commedia Court in Green Bay. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the independent football clubs, and just wanted to make sure that we, you got a feel for what we're doing, what we're all about, before you vote. I'd like to thank Mark and his team for at least getting us involved with the process at these meetings recently. We appreciate that. As a league, our objective is not to fight the initiative. Our objective is first to improve young people's lives, and secondly, improve the caliber of football in the Green Bay area. We have six independent clubs that currently are self-funded and being run by a total of 100-plus volunteers. We have kids playing for many of the high schools in Brown County. We are here to let you know we have some quality programs out there. I know the Alockway, St. Philip's, St. Thomas, Moore, formerly St. Mary, St. Peter and Paul have been around for about 40 years. Westside has been around about 25-plus. So some of these programs have a long history in Green Bay area. We'd like to reiterate some positive things we do as organizations. We provide safe play. We purchase helmets. We recertify helmets. We have professionals help us fit, to understand how to fit helmets. The guys from Rydell, from Shot, all come in and help us out. We follow the WIA concussion training certification, concussion agreements, and we have trainers at our games. In many cases, over 50% of our coaching staffs are not, are not parents of players. Many have played or coached for many years. Many of us have continued to attend coaching clinics and made personal contact with local high school coaching staffs or college coaches to better educate ourselves in regards to proper technique, strills, etc. We provide a high ratio of coaches to players. Generally, it's, you know, one coach for 10 players. I know I have about 19 coaches for three grades this past year. Some know a lot about football, some are organizers, and some take video. So I mean, we have various talents there. At the seventh and eighth grade levels, we tend to play more games relative to like a DePere's, the DePere's, you know, maybe 10 to 12. We provide a reasonable cost, $75 to $110. These fees cover less than 50% of the cost to run the programs. Each club's volunteer tiers raise the remainder of the cost through fundraising events. We do not turn kids away that are unable to pay. Programs provide, like our Alockway program, we provide academic recognition. This year, if I remember correctly, it was like 60 to 70 of 105 kids had a 92% or better. We, and then with Aldo, we kind of, we tried to consider their grading system in there as well. But we recognized all these kids for their academic achievements, and we had, I think, a dozen three-year members of that academic team. We agree that there are challenges in getting kids from the inner city to participate in our programs. Whether the issue is logistics, cost, or just dynamics of the family, we believe getting these kids involved is a priority, and maybe for a Franklin or Washington program, the proposal would be beneficial. We wanted to let you know that we do have programs in our conference that have room for more kids. We also believe that providing some kind of after-school workout program at the high schools or somehow connect them with the high schools would be beneficial, and getting these kids in a healthy program would start to build loyalty for their particular high school that they plan on attending. This is a great opportunity for the coaches and coaching staffs of those high schools to get in touch with those kids. If the proposals approve, we would like to encourage interaction between our programs at some point. Having local programs to fill schedules would be a positive for both clubs, club programs and public school programs. If we need to make some adjustments to talent levels for a particular game in order to provide a positive experience for both teams, we can make those changes. We have done that with other programs in the past. For example, adjustment to league rules or getting players that are less skilled on the field and not suiting up or playing higher skilled players on a limited basis in order to even the playing field out. In closing, we also believe our programs offer an alternative to the middle school proposal. If the middle school proposal is approved, we provide a healthy level of competition. We challenge the young people mentally and physically. We correlate these challenges with taking on the challenges of life. We focus on skill development and learning the game. We believe teaching a particular high school offensive and defensive scheme is of lower importance. We believe teaching the importance of team and being committed to your teammates, along with perseverance, self-discipline, and hard work toward a common goal, to be the significant importance in the development of these young people. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, I have Kent Bergy.
Just like to have you guys answer a few questions when we're all done here tonight. You said before, if you look at the cost of some of this stuff, you're talking about $200,000 is not going to be enough. Let's just double that. If you're going to vote, let's double to $400,000, because $200,000, you're going to underfund these programs, and they'd be worse off than where you are. As far as football, why are we only targeting one gender? If you're worried about getting these kids and having them leaving, why are we only targeting one gender? Shouldn't you be targeting both sexes? It sounds like we have some pretty good football coaches and programs unrelated to the school. Why are we not coupling up with those programs? Why are we going to spend all this money when these programs are already set up and already spent the money? Why aren't we coupled up with them? And then what's wrong with paying for participation? You know, I see these kids running around with $100 Nike shoes, $50 Underarmers, cell phones, cable, all this stuff. They can't pay to play a little bit? Why do the taxpayers have to take all this burden on? They can pay for their own way. You know, the average result would be about $2 an hour. All these coaches putting in this time, the kids are paying maybe $2 an hour. They can't pay their own way. There's nothing wrong with that. Taxpayers shouldn't have to take all this burden on all the time. Thank you very much.
Did you give us your address? Thank you. Oh, yeah. Can you say your address?
John Bill Casper, Green Bay.
I have his address. You have his address, okay. All right, that concludes the sheets I filled out. If there's someone else that'd like to speak, come on forward. You can give it to Sandy right there. Thank you.
My name is Lyle Wilkips. I live at 1942 Zize Avenue, Bynmay, Wisconsin. And I've just got a couple of comments to make and a couple of questions on here, and I can appreciate this gentleman just testified here. I agree with him wholeheartedly. They start out with, and they say that there's a $200,000, $200,000 a year cost to press, because that's at 275, but that's not the first time the school board or their press has been wrong in their figures. What is the startup cost going to be as far as equipment? There is nothing mentioned that. Is that in at $200,000? I'm not, I'm sure that it isn't. So that's going to really raise the cost. This gentleman here, I can appreciate his thoughts. I got one little comment in a paper that I don't know if it's criteria they're using to get this middle school football. I'm going to read it to you. Let's see. Here, let me just take me a second to get that outline here. Oh, it says, "Middle school players are smaller, and their hits will not be as damaging as a bigger student." And is that one of the criteria they're using? They're saying middle school football players don't have the chance of being injured late high school or college? That's the way I get from this article right here, that if that's one of the criteria they use, I don't know. Something is kind of wrong here. They must anticipate some injuries, but the injuries are going to probably be less severe with middle school, if that's what they were talking about in that article. And like I said, the startup cost and the number of students that are going to be playing, I don't know. I'm kind of against it. There's a lot of football in the thing, like this gentleman said, if it's extracurricular, let some of these kids play for the team. Like you said, they got cell phones and Nike shoes and everything, and they can't afford football. And I got one other little comment too. I don't know what their soccer program is in the city, but I have grandson and a granddaughter that they play in Plasky, and they've been playing four years now. And to me, it's unbelievable, the number of students that are in that soccer program. They started when they were three, and now they're six years old. And I don't know how our program is, but more kids would participate, both boys and girls, not just boys. I think sometimes our tax dollars are, are we trying to teach these kids football? Are we trying to teach them, you know, to be good students in sciences and whatever? And it all seems like the hinge on, let's get football, 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 the arts. You hear much on the arts, suspend it on football? No. So I think that should be a little more fair if that some of these programs were not added and some of these enlarged. And like I said, the soccer program, I'd be all for enlarging that. I don't know what, how it is now, but there's a lot of kids in that, I couldn't believe it, the amount of kids that have been playing. And I think that would, if Green Bay's putting the arts there, I don't know what the participation is, but if they can use more kids or they don't have a demand for it, I don't know. But the programs in that west area, they sure have a wonderful program. And I'd say that boys and girls both participate. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before the board? All right, seeing done, we'll go to the next agenda item, which is a roll call. Sandy?
Jeffries.
Here.
Franz.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
Skolletzky.
We are, we have six board members present, one excused. We're also joined at the table by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, superintendent, Sandy Heller, our board executive assistant, and we have Jessica Franco, who's president of the intercity student council, and also who's from Preble, and also Clarissa Skolletzky, who represents East from the intercity student council. So welcome. And next, we have approval of minutes. We have a regular board meeting from December 17th, 2012. Special board meetings, December 17th, 2012, January 7th, 2013, and special board meetings, closed sessions, December 17th, 2012, January 14th, 2013. two thousand and twelve, January fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, and January twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next, communications. We have no communications on file for this month. And then we'll move on to our building focus updates, which will be facilitated by Celestine Jeffries.
Thank you, Brenda. So, first, we are going to talk about Per Technical Education Leadership Team Progress Update, and we will be joined at the table by Lori Peacock and Sarah Brain, and also Cam Paulo.
Hello.
Hello.
Missed you all in a while.
No.
Sarah and I are here tonight because we have presented to you a board report with an update on where we've been in the last year since our CTE summit. As you can see, we have developed a CTE leadership team that has met twice. We met in April, and at that time, we went through all of the notes from the February CTE summit. The members of that CTE leadership team asked Sarah and I to get more information. We didn't feel like we had dug deep enough into some of the issues that had come up. So, what we did is, we met with four small groups in September and October. They were groups focused on business and industry, PK twelve, excuse me, PK twelve education, post-secondary education, and community organizations. If you look at your report, on pages two and three, you can see that we have the common themes that came out of those small group discussions, and also our conclusions. Our next step, then, will be, as you can see from our report, the committee had asked us to get more information from parents, because parents play such a critical role in helping their students develop their short and long-term plans. What we decided to do, since there's so much going on right now with parents, is to look at the St. Norbert College survey that was done last year, and also to look at the results that come out of the engagement sessions that you are all doing within our community, and try and get that information about parents, rather than have another separate parent group. However, we feel we need to do that, we will. So, that's where we are at this point, is we're in a holding pattern, waiting to get that parent information. The CTE leadership team, we'd like to add the word CTE Leadership and Advisory Committee, and include more of our CTE teachers in that committee, so that we can have a broader scope. And we anticipate that we will have another meeting in April. So, we are here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the board?
Well, I appreciate the work you've done in the summit. We just have to keep that focus there, and we all have to be held accountable, whether it's us, parents, or the business community. To me, that's extremely important, where we are all in this together, and keep up the good work.
I do have one question. You know, just in terms of that parent piece, are you aware of any questions or surveys that are given to the parents of the second chance students or the youth apprenticeship students?
There. To my knowledge, there are no surveys given to parents of those students. I think the challenge that we're finding is that we have a lot of information that we'd like to get to parents, but finding that venue is challenging, because parents are busy. So, that, I think that's our biggest challenge, is the members of our advisory team, who represent business and industry and post-secondary education, are wanting to partner with us to find ways to get information to parents. It's just how to find that venue. And I think what we will find is, there will probably be multiple venues, not just one key venue.
Right. Yes.
Can you speak, though? I know there are some things that you currently do and are currently going on in our schools to make students and families aware of career and technical education opportunities. Can you speak just briefly about what we currently have, so that kids have knowledge of the programs that we have, Project Lead the Way, some of those exciting programs that we're engaging in?
There are a lot of great ways within parent newsletters. There are a lot of CTSOs, our Current Technical Student Organizations, FFA, FBLA, DECA, FCCLA, those types of organizations that are including parents. And oftentimes, we find that those are the parents that are involved already, and we're able to get feedback from those parents through our CTE teachers and then our CTE program leaders. It's oftentimes, the information that we want to gather is from those parents who are not involved, because they may be working, you know, so many jobs or busy themselves that they are not able to participate in a lot of those activities. So, we do have a lot of parental guidance throughout our CTSOs, and, you know, at the building level, within Project Lead the Way, our Nursing Assistant Program, we see a lot of parental involvement in there as well.
Does that, does that then sit down to middle school as well?
Not as much. We do have middle school parents, I think, that are involved on a different level, not necessarily within CTE programs. And oftentimes, it's because at sixth grade, they do exploratory blocks, so it goes so quickly, that by the time, you know, there's time to be involved, it's more seventh and eighth grade students, and there are so many things at that time in middle school that they are involved in. We don't see, because we don't have CTSOs at the middle schools, for all of them, the only one is FFA. So, we don't see a lot of that parental involvement within the activities within any of their competitions or things like that.
So, just one more follow-up.
Go ahead.
As you look, and I know our students have like a planning document that they've done with parents at middle school, is this part of the discussion in terms of what kind of career and technical education opportunities they might look forward to?
We do an eighth grade planning conference with all of our eighth graders, and this year, for the first time, we've piloted sixth grade conferencing, because our belief is that it's almost getting too late by eighth grade to have those conversations. I don't have the data on that yet, so I hesitate to even bring it up, because I know you're going to ask me, "What is the data?", and I just don't have it yet. We do have a meeting in a few weeks to start going through that and looking at what that would really mean. And then, keep in mind that we do have conferencing in ninth and eleventh grade as well. So, we are, when parents attend, or definitely are meeting with students, we do have those conversations.
Okay, thank you.
You listed four conclusions, and I'm just wondering if you can comment on how you see some of those. For instance, the first one says, "The community needs one vision to support college career and community readiness." How do you see yourselves working toward creating that one vision? And then, the one repository, which is the next bullet point, that kind of work? Will that be all of those small groups working together, or how do you see that playing out?
Many of the members of our leadership team are also on the Partners in Education Advisory Committee, and I believe that that committee is looking at a program called STRIVE. Is that correct? And looking at that being that one convener in our community. So, we've been kind of waiting until the Chamber and PI work together to determine what that might look like, and then determine what our role needs to be as part of that. We definitely want to be involved, but we feel like that initiative is being driven. So, we're kind of waiting to see where they go with that.
Yes, go ahead.
And then, I'm just curious, we've had some exciting initiatives this year with the welding program at Southwest, and then adding the Project Lead the Way robotics and things like that at Lombardi. Do you see anything coming our way in the near future with, in terms of dreaming kinds of things that you're looking at?
I do, but am I allowed to share those with you?
I don't know.
Why not?
We're having some really important conversations.
We are having some great conversations. No, you're going to get me on a soapbox, and then I'm going to be here for an hour. But just briefly, I think two things that we're working on that are very, very exciting is, one is, we are looking at a manufacturing job site that will be available in at least one of our high schools. I have to be very careful, because they all would like this job site. We took a trip to Levisstrom High School, which is on the other side of the state, and they have an actual working manufacturing job site in their high school. And so, we are partnering with NWTC, the NEW Manufacturing Alliance, to have that happen within the Green Bay Public Schools. And we're pretty excited about that. We're looking at an October twenty, should I stop?
No, I wonder when you're going to bring this forward formally to the board.
Well, our plan is September, October. Because right now, we're doing a feasibility study.
It's all feasible.
Right. And then, the other thing that we're working on is a manufacturing internship. We have an interest, again, with the NEW Manufacturing Alliance, to provide an internship for seniors, six hours a week for a, or, let me say that again, six hours a week for a semester. And the students' pay would be scholarship money, to encourage students to then pursue a post-secondary education. So, we have those two things that we're working on.
We're also looking at a construction partnership with Habitat for Humanity or Neighbor Works Green Bay, to take a look at how our students could be more involved in the building of a home in the community. But we're just at infancy stages of that. DePier currently has a program, but it would be taking the courses that we run already, partnering with NWTC for their curriculum, using our teachers, and then also partnering with one of those organizations, so that we could utilize their skills and abilities and build a home, so.
DePier has a program with whom?
With Habitat for Humanity.
Oh, they do?
Mm-hmm. Yep, their house should actually be done by the end of February or beginning of March, that they are building, and it's within walking distance from DePier High School. So, that's what we're looking at, is finding a good location for the Green Bay Public Schools students, that transportation isn't as much of an issue.
I think the thing that's really exciting for us is, when you look at the background data on this report, and you look at the four bullets, and what we had really hoped to accomplish by hosting a CTE summit, all four of those things are currently happening in less than a year within our community, just by creating that opportunity for people to come together and talk about partnerships, they are happening. And it's, I think it's really exciting that people are contacting us and wanting to know how to get programs and information to our students. So, this is a really exciting time for us.
I think that level of awareness has just been, you know, risen so much that they, you know, they can't stop thinking about it, and can't stop wondering how they can make it better in the community for our students. So, it's really, it's a very exciting time.
I think there are lots of people on lots of levels interested in workforce initiatives, so these are all very exciting.
I think it's, I mean, I'm always excited when we can take what they're learning in the classroom out into the real world, and kind of show them how it applies, because I know for some kids, that's what they keep saying, "Why do I have to learn this?", and, you know, it just doesn't make sense to them until they see it in action out on work sites like these or other places. So, I think it's great work that you're doing, and it's really exciting that the community is interested and involved.
Great. Other questions? Awesome, thank you. Thanks for the update, too.
Thank you.
Alrighty, I have to go back. Just give me a second. I do, I do now. Okay, next month's report.
Stephen Miller will be here to talk with us about the ACT and Explore assessments that the state, and obviously, when the state looks at something, our district also needs to be looking at something. So, he's going to come in and just share some information with you about what they are, what they do, and where we're at.
Okay, I was going to ask a question, but don't need to. And school site reports, so that's still on there, although...
We just talked about the other day that we need to get back with you and Mr. Bledka to talk about where we are with our school improvement process.
I was going to say, how we're going to, right.
Reporting on.
Right, because we had decided that we were not going to continue with the school site reports, but then we had also talked about actually going into the school improvement plans of various schools and working on that. So, we'll arrange a meeting.
We're working away on that.
Because you work super hard. And then, that concludes my piece of the agenda.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Celestine. Next, we move to the superintendent's update.
I want to draw attention to the calendar for February. We have a special board meeting at five o'clock here in the same room on February fourth, and then our Teaching and Learning Work Session will be the eighteenth of February, beginning at five-thirty. So, note the different times on those two meetings. And then, February eighteenth immediately following, we'll have the organizational support work session as well. Then, on February twentieth, we have a very important meeting, the ICSC meeting with our student leaders in the district at seven AM, and that will be held in this room as well. And then, I would like to draw your attention to the February twenty-first Community Engagement Session, which will be held during the lunch hour at Harmony Cafe. We had a nice conversation and a fairly reasonably sized, good-sized turnout at our first session at the library. It was a very cold evening, but we look forward to that next session to get the feedback from the community on the strategic roadmap, and their input in terms of what's working well, and what we need to scale, you know, up on and so forth. And then, on February twenty-fifth, toward the end of the month, is our regular board meeting here in the same room at five-thirty. So, that is our upcoming calendar for February. And then, I think the next items are action items, and I'm going to turn it over to you, President Warren.
Okay. The next actually is, first is a discussion item, looking at board member compensation and expenses. This is something that we look at yearly in January usually, and so, I bring it forward to see if anybody has any changes they would like to see in the policy. Otherwise, if not, we'll keep the policy as is.
Which essentially means that we are the, just to say it, that the compensation for the board has remained fairly flat, if I'm not mistaken. I've only been here for three years, but it's remained fairly flat for...
Since I've been on.
Yes.
How long since you've been on?
A decade.
Fifteen, probably fifteen years, yes.
So, I think that's important to say to the public, that we are ensuring that we are really volunteering our time here. We get a small compensation, and that's appropriate.
Are there any other changes in the policy? All right. Then, we will keep that in the policy manual as is. First, I'd entertain a motion on the first action item.
I move that the resolution authorizing a hundred and thirty thousand state trust fund loan as presented be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and Allen's at the table to give us details on that.
Again, this has to do with our referendum in two thousand and ten. As you remember, the IRA dollars were available at that time, and we were able to borrow sixteen point five seven million dollars at zero percent interest at that time, which left a hundred and thirty thousand dollars yet to borrow. And we are utilizing the state trust fund loan, which is through the state of Wisconsin, to borrow the hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and we will be borrowing that money in March, and we'll be paying it back in May. And because we are allowed to pay it back early, there will be no interest on that debt. So, in fact, the entire sixteen point seven million will have been at zero percent interest.
Good. Are there any questions? Roll call, Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
I will need, sorry, I will need to get signatures from all seven board members at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Carried six-zero, thank you, Allen. Next, I'd entertain a motion under administrators contracts.
I move that the administrative contracts for the twenty thirteen fourteen and twenty fourteen fifteen school years as presented be approved.
Second.
Any comments, Jean, or...
This is, January is when these contracts could be for the board. Any changes to positions or compensation would come at a later date for board consideration. So, what you're really doing here is, you're just authorizing additional contract to the people on the list that we provided. And these are the administrative, this is the administrator group.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Sandy?
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carried six-zero, entertain the next motion.
I move that the resignation of Dean Florence, noon our supervisor, as listed be approved.
Second.
It's the same, same process that we've followed over the years, and this is the list of people who are in these three categories.
Any questions? Thanks. Any questions, comments? Roll call, Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Carried six-zero, entertain the next motion.
I move that the resignation of Dean Florence, noon hour supervisor, as listed be approved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Warren.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Jeffries.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Carried six zero, entertain the next motion.
I move that the employment probationary contract of Jordan Kratz as a technology education teacher at Washington Middle School as listed be approved.
Second.
Questions? Roll call, Sandy.
Wagner.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Jeffries.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Carried six zero, entertain a motion for the next motion.
I move that the employment of Jeremy Babig as an engineer at Franklin Middle School as listed be approved.
Second.
Any other questions? Roll call, Sandy.
Franz.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Jeffries.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Carried six zero. And that entered, no, that was it. And that concludes your report?
Yes, that concludes.
Next, we have the Inter-City Student Council report. I'll turn that over to Jessica.
Thank you. I would like to start off my report by informing the board and the public of a great opportunity. All of the four high schools will be part of the CP Telethon coming up on March 2nd. Two representatives from each schools, each four high schools have been chosen to attend the CP Telethon. It is, again, March 2nd from 10:00 at night to 11:00 at night. And I guess basically our role in what we do is we get pledges, and we hope that people call and with their donations. It will be televised. I'm not sure on what channel, but...
ABC.
ABC. And then, like I said, it's, we have representatives from each of the four high schools. If anyone is interested on early donations, you can contact the high schools or you can contact me personally. We had Amy Murphy from the CP Center come in to our meeting last Sunday to give us a brief presentation, and it was, it was really good. She showed us like the cause and what the money goes for and all the people who need it. And actually, my brother use it, has used the CP Center and their services, so.
Jessica, if you bring pledge sheets to the ICSC meeting this month?
Oh, sure.
Are you an hour earlier than normal? Because we used to not be able to stay up. You usually get the 11:00 midnight slot.
Yeah, I think last year...
Bring slips anyway, just in case we...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think the times may have changed, but...
Yeah.
And then the next thing on my report that I would like to talk about are some concerns and issues that students had with the Infinite Campus and the new semester schedule. A lot of students from the other high schools, not Preble, but a lot of students from the other high schools were concerned because some of their year-long courses, the schedule changed. Some had different teachers, some had the class a different hour. And I guess they were just wondering why that happened and how that happened. I know at Preble, the master scheduler, Mrs. Everie, the associate principal, I had, I talked to her today, and she talked to me through the process she went through to make sure that students at Preble had their year-long courses with the same teacher and the same hour. From what I heard, there was a lot of hard work and time put into that, both on her part and the counselors. This, this change, I guess, was supposed to be, was supposed to make Infinite Campus and the classes have more flexibility. So, this change through Infinite Campus last year didn't happen because we rolled over from the program we had been using, Zingle. This year, since this is our first full year with Infinite Campus, these changes took place. I guess some of the students' concerns at the other high schools were that, you know, they had formed bonds and relationships with the teachers, not only the teachers, but the students as well. I know a big part of higher-level courses comes through discussion, and some students feel, at the beginning of the year, don't feel as comfortable talking with their classmates, but towards the middle and end of the year, that bond is there, so they feel comfortable with high-level, they feel comfortable to engage in high-level discussions. Also, another concern that the students had, some teachers were ahead, some teachers were behind on their schedule and what they were teaching. So, if they got a different teacher for the same subject, for example, math, they weren't quite sure how they would close the gap or catch up with the teacher and other students in their class, too.
And so, I see you shaking your head, Clarissa, so tell me a little bit about what's going on at East High.
At East, several students have been, have had schedules changed, so they'll have like either a different teacher, and then it'll be like a different hour with a whole set of different students in the class. Because I, my mother is at East High School, I can, it's easier for me to like set up arrangements with my counselor and switch my schedule, so it's like the same hour and same teacher. Or even if it's a different hour, same teacher at least. But it can be like, it was like the second, first day of school for us, most of us, like, because it was like totally different. Most of the time, you had the same classes, but it was just totally switched, and you're starting all over again, putting us behind. And if you had like a teacher, like the science department had arranged like for biology classes, they all had to be at the same like level in teaching stuff at the same like places, so then they were all lined up, and it's kind of a hassle.
Why do you think it's an Infinite Campus problem?
Speaking with Mrs. Everie today, I think it's programmed into Infinite Campus, actually. And I guess the background and the point of it is to have more flexibility with semester-long courses, they're called singlets, I guess. And say someone really wants to take, let's say, an art class. By having this rule or this program, it creates more flexibility for students who want to take courses that are only one semester long. So, let's say this art class is only offered a certain period, then if they had math that period, second semester, they can switch their math and get this selective.
But it happened with students that didn't have singlets?
Correct, and for core classes also. Like you said, math, biology, for year-long courses. So, what Miss Everie did, she went in and manually changed, I guess, the rule, and she hooked year-long courses. So, each student had the same teacher, the same hour for the whole year.
Like I had said, my mom's a teacher. She has biology, I think it's like second hour, and then she had this one student in her biology class, but he's now in my biology class, the same hour, but where she could be with her and be on the same track and know what's going on in the classroom rather than to be with a whole other teacher, you know? So, stuff like that.
Is that, is this the first year we've scheduled with Infinite Campus?
The first.
I need to get the people who know.
I haven't been part of any of this, so I'm just curious.
Because, you know, the other thing, too, when I recall getting my children's schedules, there were changes already written into their schedule for, that we received at the beginning of the year for second semester, even though it was a year-long course, so.
Well, I think there's two components. One is the change to Infinite Campus, which probably requires us to set things up differently than it would in the previous software. Also, based on the number of students that we're scheduling, and if we're using the Infinite Campus the way it should be used, and we're getting our dollars out of what we're paying for, we're using that system to actually schedule students via the computer. So, when you schedule via the computer, they don't put faces with the names and know who someone wants for a teacher, who they don't want for a teacher, or that they've actually started somewhere and may want to end there. So, I think that's the basis of most of the issue, is when you use a software program that you purchased and you're trying to schedule thousands of students, you have to use that software. The other piece is if a student starts in a teacher's classroom next to you, and then you get to next semester and they're not there, that doesn't necessarily mean that the computer moved them. It may mean that they wanted to pick up an art class or a music class, and the only way they could get that would be to move to a different section. So, scheduling, and Barb can attest to this, too, but it's really a difficult challenge and a puzzle. And many times, the counselors will need to actually go through schedule by schedule by schedule sometimes to make sure that students are lined up if they possibly can, but that takes a lot of work. You have to go back in, look at their schedule, you know, switch things around, and then see if you have to move other students to accommodate that student. So, it's, it's a very long, arduous process.
I certainly, I'm sorry, Mark.
Well, I was just going to say, the only thing to add to that, Infinite Campus is a premier system in terms of scheduling. It, it has enormous capacity in terms of scheduling. The impetus between or among the scheduling rules is to provide the students with the satisfaction of their course requests. So, if you look at that as a priority, and then you compare it across buildings, a school like Preble High School that has many more students has many more course options. So, it's a lot easier to allow those kids to get their classes. But if you look at West High School with IB, you start to really narrow down the choices. East High School, fine, you start to narrow down the choices, and, and that's where you get into satisfying course requests, which is the primary objective of meeting the kids' needs in terms of what they want. And sometimes that comes at a move from your social studies first semester teacher to a different teacher second semester, because you could allow that to work out into the whole schedule over a whole year. Mrs. Everie is a phenomenal master scheduler, and I think she's provided a few more options because of the size of, of the courses or the amount of courses that are offered at Preble as well.
Thank you. I was going to say, you're right, scheduling is extremely complicated. There are so many nuances, especially with the new program, and somebody spending the time to do it. Now, I can understand the example when somebody wants the art class second semester, start an art class in there, and it bumped the social studies class to another time. But should they not know that on their schedule at the start of the year when they get it? So, that should have been known then. Now, the example with biology, where that same period was biology again, but with a different class or teacher, I don't know whether a student would have rarely spotted that one. And that, to me, shouldn't have been, you know, in the system.
The only thing I could speculate is that it came in a balancing of a teacher workload, you know, where, where you had to look at, you know, the impact on other courses. But I would, I would agree with you. I think we could look at that and find out what was the explanation for that.
Can we, I hate to have too much discussion, because this actually is not on our agenda.
Right. Although it's with the report, but, yeah.
Yeah, anyway, it's, you know, a gray area. But I'm wondering if maybe, I mean, I assume this is going to come up at the Inter-City Student Council meeting in a few weeks, in February. And then, at that point, we'll have a chance to ask more questions about this. And then also, if the board decides at that point that we would like a presentation, we can ask for that to be put on our agenda in March. If that...
Yes.
Okay.
And I think also, you know, in preparation for that meeting, that you should continue to elicit, and the members of the ICSC, elicit, you know, experiences from the students about this, so they can have a good discussion.
Did you have one more question?
Well, just from, I'll, I think, I'll hold off on the IC thing. I think my concern would be similar to many others, but I guess, I don't want, I don't want the ICSC report to, you know, we had to stop discussion, I don't know if we really had to, but you play it safe, and wouldn't, would it be possible to put some, say what some likely topics are, even if they're potential topics? Do you meet before the third Monday or before the, or in between the two?
We need the Sunday night before the session meeting.
So, that would be ample time to put something, I mean, not that you'd be limited to those topics, but right if, if a list of, I mean, you, so pretty much you knew for about a week that some of these things were going to come up?
Yep, what I try to do on Sunday nights when I run the meeting is try and get suggestions for my report for that month.
So, there would be no, there would be no reason that there couldn't be a A and a B or a one or a two if they've already met and they know what the topics are. It would be...
What are you doing, Karen?
What are you talking about? I'm not...
If, if, instead of saying Agenda Item 9, Interestee Student Council Report, 10 minutes, if it said Interestee Student Council Report, A, Infinite Campus Scheduling Issues, it would then be a noticed item. And we've known for, they've known for eight days that they wanted to talk about it, so we could say more if it was noted.
Yeah, but it makes sense to talk mostly about it when the students are there.
Right, at their meeting.
Because it's their...
Right, but their meeting was eight days ago.
No, no, they're meeting with us.
The one they meet with us.
No, but we don't have the, you're claiming that we don't have the right to, to talk about it in detail here. We have to, we are first to stifle it because it wasn't on the paper.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
I'm not saying we wouldn't, we wouldn't, would be going to the same level of detail that we would with, you know, talking to 30 kids, "How many of you?" Well, no, we wouldn't do that here, but now we've had to curtail something that's, you know, and maybe, maybe another time, we wouldn't be meeting with them in a couple of weeks.
Just a question. Is the report a discussion? That's, that's why I'm, that, is it, when, 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 and that's just my, just a clarification. If this is their report, is it intended to be a discussion? And so, then would you put discussion items on? I don't know, I'm just asking for clarification.
And I guess I really wasn't clear on that either.
Yeah. Alaska.
Legal counsel.
Attorney.
Sure. Because that's, that's, I think where the confusion lies.
Yes.
From where I...
Well, she's coming. Are you okay with this becoming an ICSC agenda item when we, when you meet with us?
Oh, for the quarterly, yeah.
Yeah. It's a good idea.
Right, so we can get input from the whole group.
Yeah.
So...
Hi.
Hello.
I think for purposes of the public meetings, you need to be, provide specific enough, it doesn't have to be specific, but it needs to be enough information where the public would have notice as to what you're going to discuss. So, having the simple notice that there, there's going to be the Student Council Report, obviously, things that come from Student Council would, would be natural coming from that. However, it's listed as a report, and so it would be fine for some, some minimal follow-up related to that report, but having a full interaction on those sorts of things probably is not what, what you would expect.
In other words, the amount of, I think, the amount of discussion we have had, which I think is a good amount and we should do more, perhaps we should have, you're pretty, no, but perhaps we should have been listing items by title when we knew them. If, just have the level of dis, we probably should have had it just even to go as far as we did. Right, I mean, they can report out on anything, but we, just the amount of, it sounds like you're saying the amount of interaction we just had on Inter-City Campus ideally would have been in...
I, I'm not going to talk, I don't think it would be fair to talk about what happened tonight because I would need to look a little bit more at that, but just for future, I would hate to stifle the, the report coming from Student Council and, and putting those specific items. I think the way that it has been noticed on the agenda has, has worked for the Student Council Report, and you've probably gotten to that point because that has, what has met the board's needs.
Right.
Yeah, this is the first time we've ever had the need to have a discussion about something on your report, since I've been on the board, so.
What? Then we should, then there's, we should have, I mean...
No, we've had, we've had conversations, but I think we've discussed it to the level. We've reported on it to the level that it rises to the merit of being placed on your agenda, and we'll continue this discussion in a couple of weeks when we meet with your group.
Yeah, don't feel...
That will give administrators time...
Don't feel stifled by this.
To, you know, gather more information. I think Mr. Smith would probably join us, as well as, Ms. Paolo is always there, but Mr. Smith would make himself available, and people can tell us the rest of the story. Looking forward to it.
My intent was not to limit. My intent was to offer, when we know of those topics that are known, we could discuss more, and then reporting could still happen on any topic.
You have more on your report?
I do have a couple of news, just from...
Thank you.
Thanks, Clarissa.
I guess just something exciting happening anywhere at Preble. We are forming our first Model EU team, EU stands for European Union. I'm proud to say that two ICSC members are part of this group. Priyanka Nirvani and myself are part of this group. It is made up of freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. And it's basically a simulation on, like a European Union meeting. We engage in negotiations and debates on issues about the European Union, and it's, it's through St. Norbert's. I'm not, I forgot the date exactly, but the advisor for Preble is Mr. Jeff Klein.
Oh, okay.
That would be a good time.
That's interesting, EU.
Yeah, cool.
There is a Model U.N., United Nations, but the one specifically we are engaging in is Model EU. So, we're really excited about that. And then, just for Shakwa, at Preble had a Colby competition, a competition at Colby, and I just wanted to say that Rendezvous got first in their category, and they were sixth runner-up overall. Center Stage got second overall, and also got award, got an award for best costumes. At East, last Tuesday was the Preble East Basketball Game and Drumline Battle. It was very well-attended, both the students and people from the community. I saw President Warren there. I saw you in the stands. The winner, as to the winner of the Drumline Battle, I'm not really sure yet. I guess each school says they won, but I haven't seen it.
As it should be.
But overall, a great performance from both schools, I thought. Very entertaining. I know that's something that the Drumline gets really excited about, and everyone actually looks forward to attending those games, so. And in case you missed Southwest Musical, they are doing West Side Story. They did it this past weekend. Their last performances are Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, all at 7:00 PM, if you wanna get a chance to go watch that. And then the West, we kind of talked about it last week, with their Silent Night against East, the West and East Basketball Game, that was also in great attendance. And we mentioned that Anna Ying, an ICSC member, won the costume contest. That concludes my report.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Next, we have the Legislative Liaison Report, and Mike's not here because he's in Washington, DC, in his capacity as Board Member of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, Board. And I am just going to go over the Delegate Assembly results, and basically, the, we had talked about the resolutions a few weeks ago, and most of them carried. The one that failed was the Student Academic and Career Plans, asking that, or saying that all Wisconsin students have an academic and career plan beginning in the middle school grades. It was felt by many that this was, was, we were creating a mandate for ourselves when most of the schools are already doing academic and career plans beginning in the middle school grades. And so that was the general conversation, and then, and then that resolution was voted down. The other resolution that was voted down was the, one of the shortage of speech-language pathologists and other special education service providers. There was quite a bit of discussion about that, concerns about quality of service for students, concerned about not having well-defined training programs, certification programs, if we were to go to an alternate pathway. And that one failed, it was the closest vote we had, it was 192 no's to 127 yeses. And the rest of the resolutions all carried. Did anyone have any questions?
Were any amended in such a way to change their meaning? Is that how it still is done?
No. There was, there were amendments that were recommended, and I think they were all voted down.
I don't think any of the amendments, the amendment were defeated.
Amendments were all defeated.
The speech pathology one was actually amended before it came to the board.
The famous one I remember was that someone tried to amend supports four-year-old kindergarten to the WSB opposes, and the amendment was actually allowed from the floor, which is clearly, you can't do that. You can't offer amendment that completely reverses it. So I was just curious.
No, all the amendments were reasonable.
I think all the amendments failed, in fact, one amendment didn't even get a second.
Yeah.
Well, that's, and there's 300 people.
Right, I thought that was, even for the sake of discussion, but Brenda served us well in that capacity. Mary and I watched from behind. Not good, sure.
All right, and Mike will be back next month to do an official Legislative Liaison Report.
Okay.
And then we have our systems reports. The first one is Teaching and Learning, and that will be facilitated by Katie Rooney.
Thank you, Brenda. We had no discussion items, but we did have action items that, that was a pretty good discussion. And for the first motion, if I could ask Kim Paulo and Mark Smith to come to the tables that we can entertain any further questions or concerns. I moved that the middle school football program, $203,040, be approved.
Second?
Any...
Then you ask for discussion. Then you ask for discussion.
Go ahead, Chelsea.
Okay. Okay, so, I just have a few questions. We had a very good discussion last week. We had the coaches come and activities directors come as well. Unfortunately, I forget everyone's names, but I thought there was a good group and some good discussion. But I have a few more just follow-up questions. These are mostly from people who've contacted me in the community. Okay, so, right out of the bat, if you could just talk a little bit about how middle school football would differ from high school football as far as helping to protect the younger kids from head injuries? Would we follow, how do we do different rules? We talked last week about the helmets and the helmet check and the safety and how we're going to really ensure that, but I'd like you to elaborate a little bit about how, how that works in middle school, and then also how that works in high school in terms of helping to keep the game, more game and less head-hutting.
Good. First of all, safety is our highest priority. It certainly is, and we presented that last week, and you heard from coaches that illustrated that piece as well. There's both differences and there are similarities, and I think that serves us well between the middle school and the high school. In terms of our regulations, we would follow WIA regulations at the middle school, much like the high schools do, at the high school level, obviously. We would follow the conference bylaws that have stipulations in there right now in terms of the Brown County Middle School League. We would also work to ensure partnership with our athletic training services that we have, in terms of concussion testing and ensuring a proper diagnosis, and then ultimately also abide in by the re-entry practices and recommendations that they provide as well. We're advantaged in that respect, in that our high schools have gone through that this past year, and we have that expertise within our existing partnership as well. In addition to that, I think it's important that we really emphasize that our proposal is for seventh and eighth grade, and it's intentionally for seventh and eighth grade because we feel that those students are most developmentally ready for that sport. Certainly keeping in mind that we need to teach proper skills. The players need to be taught how to properly play tackle football, so hiring high-qualified coaches that are, that are well-skilled and receptive to the professional learning to teach those skills is a priority for us as well.
Describe, you talked a little bit last week about the process that we use to choose the middle school football program, what surveys we had done, and et cetera. So if you could just go over that again, a little bit more detail, then also talk about other programs that we have either implemented or had considered based on our internal research.
Sure. Do you want to start a little bit with the background, or you want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, the, you know, data analysis in this district has, has been ongoing. Some of the more recent surveys that were conducted date back to 2005 with Mary Pfeiffer, David Zadnik, where they looked at the overall athletic programming. And even early on back in 2005, the numbers in terms of those student interest surveys supported the addition of middle school football at that time. Most recently, a survey was done where students were asked the question, a very general question of, if offered, would you be interested? And the results were amazing. You know, there were, in some areas, over 40 to 45% of the kids, both male and female, that said that they were interested. And then what we did is, in preparation for the presentation, we wanted to make sure that the data still supported that. That was the spring of 2012. Recently, this fall, we asked the activities directors to provide a more specific survey, where we listed the offerings during fall, and students had a choice at that point, so we could really drill down to the numbers. And the numbers were very, very appropriate for that as well. You know, in, sorry, wrong document. For example, Edison Middle School had 131 kids that said that they would participate specifically in football. 92 at Franklin, 144 at Lombardi, Red Smith at 64, Washington had 114. So we had 545 students in the district that said that they would participate specifically in middle school football, if offered, at grade seven and eight.
The other, the other piece of that, I think that's important, is when we sent the original survey out last spring, we didn't just address football. We asked them, here's a list, what would you be interested in? We also asked them, what's not on the list that you would be interested in? Football even showed up there, even though it was already on the list in a couple places. But I think the point that I'm trying to make is we took a comprehensive look at all of our middle school athletics, and continue to look at, what aren't we offering? What else could we be offering? What can we offer to students that doesn't need to be offered in a formal format like this, because there's not necessarily a budget implication? You know, clubs and activities that teachers are willing to, you know, be an advisor for. So I think the point there I'm trying to make is we are paying attention to the other activities and athletics. We continue to work through our athletic improvement initiative that started a number of years ago. We continue to look at riders. We do have a rider committee. I know one of the conversations was around the cost of what we're paying our coaches. We've done some research on that in parallel to this work. So I think there's a big picture there, too, that's probably not getting brought to the table because we're talking about middle school football. Awesome. My last question is about the selection, professional development, training, et cetera, of the coaches, because it's important to make the program a good one. I think skill development is very, very important at all levels, even quite frankly, at the NFL, skill development is clearly important. But it clearly is important for seventh and eighth graders. And so if you could talk a little bit about coach selection, development, training, et cetera?
One of the advantages that we have with middle school seventh and eighth grade football is that partnership with the high school, and specifically the high school football coach and the high school activities director. So that's paramount to that process. We'd first start with posting the position and having a focused recruiting effort in terms of publication, and making sure that folks, not only in the school district, but out in the community, are aware of the opportunity. From that, we go through a screening process where we actually have screening tools. We identify the, the, the specific areas that we're looking for in terms of qualifications, in terms of dispositional skills, and we would go through the actual interview process, the recommendation process, and those coaches would go through a confirming interview that would move through me and through the Human Resources Department, ultimately resulting in a recommendation to the Board of Education for approval.
I think the piece around the professional learning comes in that we would obviously want to make sure those coaches are receiving the same professional learning as our high school coaches, particularly around the safety issues. Our relationship with Bell and the training, athletic trainers, I think will be key. I think we also have access to other professional learning opportunities through WIAA and local physicians. You know, we receive a lot of information about people who want to come in and help us make sure our students are safe when they participate, and they're not, they're well-known, well-vetted-out practitioners in the community.
Awesome. Thank you. That's it for me. All right. Jessica, go ahead.
Could you go over one more time, for the sake of many of us who are paying attention to this subject? What are the factors that preclude certain children from certain attendance areas from participating in these club programs?
You know, in our presentation, we, we acknowledged that the club, the community organizations are doing a great service, and they, when, when they are, and this is certainly in conversations with the folks in the community, when they're aware of a student that has a financial barrier, they certainly work with those, those families. What we've determined at the building level is that there are many students that are not even communicating with those club organizations to work through the barriers, to work through some of those obstacles. So certainly finances is what we're finding is a barrier for students to participate. And then also, I'd offer transportation is another barrier. Unfortunately, some families don't have access. They may have two parents that are working second shift. It's difficult for them to move from Edison to the location of where one of the community football organizations are practicing. So those are the two barriers that we've researched and learned and heard from our families as well.
Thank you. Edou?
I have a couple of, couple of points here, but not to, not to hit you full, but someone did have a good point. What about the girls? And while I know that it is a sport that on paper officially would be open to girls, and I hope some would consider going out, the, the reality is the chances of it being over 10% girls are, is exceedingly remote. So what, like, what was discussed about that, or is that something I have to go back and think about some additional options? Maybe we want to have balance.
Sure, absolutely. We did take that into consideration in planning and preparing for the presentation, and we did ask our middle schools to, to make sure that they were communicating now to all students and back. In some of the middle schools, we did have females that did sign up, that did say they want to play all right. So there are those that have committed. And that is, that is an ongoing communication plan. If the board approves this, we can certainly keep in our communication plan in terms of announcements to students as well. We, we do take this as an opportunity for all students, certainly recognizing that males more often participate. Overall programming, we've looked at from both scope and sequence relative to males and females. We offer soccer that is a coed at the middle school level, and just recently, as a matter of fact, added that in response to similar survey data as well. And much the same for activities. We would do the same thing as well.
I think it's important to point out that we have checked, we are in compliance with Title IX. We also, if you look at middle school in the fall, girls have the opportunity to play volleyball and soccer, both. Boys, however, had the opportunity to play soccer, and then they both had the opportunity to run cross-country. So realistically, girls have an opportunity in the fall to participate in more activities than the boys. So I think now, if you look, it's football, soccer, volleyball, soccer, and they can all participate in cross-country. So I just want to make sure, number-wise, which isn't what Title IX is really about. People think you have to offer the same number, but that's really not what Title IX is. When you, when you look at the numbers, now it would be consistent, so.
I guess, I want to get to this, I want to get to this pay-for-play idea that was, that was brought up here, and this, to hear, to hear comments like, well, these, these kids can pay-to-play, they're running around with their Nikes and their cellphones and whatever. These schools, okay, number one, these are seventh and eighth graders. These are kids who have, are absolutely at the, at the mercy of their, their family's earning power and their parents', their parents' decisions about priorities. They couldn't get, they would not even have the option, maybe a few eighth graders, but realistically speaking, they wouldn't have the option to get a job for a few hours a week to pay-to-play if they wanted to. Not that, it should be about that anyways. Now, yes, club teams do have scholarships, although transportation is, is still a cost. We have, we have schools in this district that 80% of the kids qualify for, for free and reduced lunch, and I think people don't understand that. We have, we have 700 and however many students, it's higher this year than last time we counted, that don't have a home to live in. All right? If, if that student who doesn't have a home to live in, if their family had $75 for football, it would probably, probably be needed for something more, more of an essential need. And I just, whenever I hear that, whenever I hear those kind of portrayals of our, of our students... our students and the community, I, I don't like it. I'm going to say something about it every time that it happens. And this is a, this is a realistic factor. This is a, a realistic problem. There are plenty of families for whom, even if the $75 or $100 or $120 was covered, and again, our club teams do the best they can to do that, yeah, there's people who, there are, there are individuals who are, who I work with on a regular basis who are busting their butts educationally and job search-wise and are worried about gas to get to one interview next week. This is, this is the reality of our, of our community, a community where now more than half of our students, more than half of Green Bay, Wisconsin qualifies for, for free and reduced lunch. So access is an issue and is an important issue, and that is a part of this. That, that being said, and great answer about the, about girls, by the way, I overlooked that they have two, they did have two to the guys' one. I also want, just want to address, you know, the, this will be a, my vote would not have been, would not be yes on this proposal if I didn't believe it wasn't at least revenue-neutral. Do you run a program for the sole purpose of having people not change districts? I think, no, you don't. But you do want a district, you know, Lombardi Middle School doesn't have football, never, never has. That's, that's weird. The majority of our neighbors and the country has middle school football as an option. And our coaches talked about a variety of reasons, including safety by having consistent training programs that are offered, by having some team continuity, having a high school coach work with a, a middle school coach. And we had, from both sides of the issue, we have four speakers. Okay, so if you look at the amount of, if we did lose students over football, which we know we do, that would be each of those four speakers, entire property tax bill that they pay, they work hard for that money, getting up and walking away to another school district. And that's, that's what's happening there. That is not the only reason that you offer programs, but it is a reason that you want strong offerings in both co-curricular and, and academic offerings. And I do look forward after, after this to addressing before too much longer what we're doing for other activities. I think the timing and the research was right for this, but I think we're quite a bit behind on, you know, there are some, there are some large chess events that we have to scrape together peanuts from the intramural funds to try to, to try to cover. So I look forward to a discussion about that soon and, and good faith, if we're going to cover athletics, let's cover non-athletic co-curriculars too in the, in the near future. But that all being said, I think a, a strong case has been made out here, and I'm, I'm intending to vote yes on a program that I, I believe will be at least a revenue-neutral program for our district.
Katie?
I need to amend the motion because the dollar amount reflected in the motion does not include the annual cost, so the, the dollar amount should read $276,680.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Oh, you know, the person who's second.
The person who's second needs to accept that.
Second.
Okay. And now we vote on the amendment.
Right.
On the cost of that too, I want to make sure that both the board and the public understand that the cost of that program was actually vetted out pretty thoroughly already last spring. And then in Mr. Smith's excellent work that he does, they actually went back again this year to reconnect and relook at the cost to make sure that we were still on target and that what we had listed there last spring in our initial exploration was accurate and made adjustments. So I just think we need you to know that that was well-vetted out.
Let's vote, we have to vote on the amendment.
Vote on the amendment.
Well, I guess we'll vote on that one without any discussion or now.
Yeah, let's vote on the amendment and we'll.
Okay, continue.
Continue discussion if you need to.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six-zero. All right, so the amendment's been changed. Is there any more discussion about the initial motion? Chris?
If I may. First of all, to Mr. Islandfeld and others with club sports, and once you know, we certainly appreciate all you folks have done through the years for our youngsters. In my previous life, I certainly more than appreciate what's been done and have seen firsthand. Also, I, I think it bears further discussion down the road, Mr. Van Den Hoven's point about our parents are doing things that perhaps the school district should be covering. I think it's worthy of further discussion down the road. I think there's a lot of merit in his remarks. The concern I had with going to football at a lower age and someone we all have at high rates also is basically, basically with concussions. And we're certainly seeing more press on that. You know, one way to look at it is from the moment we're conceived, we're at risk, is a matter of how you manage risk, and that's what we try to do in every situation. I know we've been talking about football, but quite frankly, I, I think soccer may be more injurious, in terms of injuries. And after that, one that's even more serious when injuries, when something happens is basketball, because there is no protection there now per capita, at least the numbers I saw back when injuries in basketball were more substantial. Now, concussions are another matter because some of the effects of that you don't see until later on in later concussion. Everything I've been reading lately, it's, it's the number of concussions and the recovery time allowed when there is a concussion. So I, I, you know, from my end, that's what we really have to watch in all of these sports right now. And I have to have faith that, that folks will follow through with their coaches and athletic directors and whatnot towards that particular end, not just in football, but all these other sports.
Any other comments, Austin?
Just two quick comments. You know, so my sons are freshmen, and they're fairly substantial in size. And when they were in seventh grade, they were not the tallest in their class. The girls were. So, you know, I think that if there were some enterprising young seventh and eighth grade girls who would be interested in playing middle school football, that they may actually have some successes because they may be bigger than their male counterparts. There, there is a young lady on the West High School, I think she's, she's not, she wasn't on the freshman team. She's on the, the, I think the JV team. And, you know, my son, my other son, that's one son who played football, and the other son who wrestles, taught, we talk about girls wrestling with boys, and there needs to be more girls wrestling. So I think more we encourage girls to do these types of sports, the better it is. And I, I do appreciate your explanation about the soccer and the volleyball because quite frankly, I'm not sure if there are any boys on the West High School volleyball team. I'm just saying.
That's because we offer boys volleyball.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Okay. That, that boys volleyball. I missed that one.
It's the, the West, Southwest volleyball team.
Got it.
I missed that.
Okay.
Is that allowed by WIAA for boys to play on a girls' team?
No. Some sports, yes. Some sports they have, and we actually called about middle school volleyball, girls, because we had, we've had boys that would like to participate.
Yeah.
And the answer that we received from the WIAA at the time is, it has a lot to do with developmental, where, where kids are developmentally. So do you want a, an eighth grade boy who is, according to statistics, more muscular, stronger, hitting a ball into a eighth grade girl on a volleyball court? So their recommendation is that you not allow males to play on females volleyball. I mean, so it all kind of comes back to, usually our best bet is to check in with the WIAA and see what their rules and regulations are. But it does, it, it does go by sport. It's not a general, overall.
Oh, interesting. Lawrence, I've learned like three new things today. Then just, I wanted to talk a little bit about the kids paying for football and, and the way that that works at the high school level. You know, now, our family is not, we're not one of the families who would need someone to pay for us, for our sons to participate. But I, I really appreciated the, the, the kind of unanimous support that the students got in terms of being outfitted in their equipment, for the football players, all the way down to their shoes. I, I only know about football and wrestling at this point. So for the wrestlers, they had to buy their own shoes, but everything else was supplied. And that gave a kind of leveling, a kind of shared experience and a shared expectation that, that as parents who can afford, I appreciate that. I think my sons appreciate that too, because everybody gets the same thing. And, and nobody has to ask, there isn't a, and I think it's important for, you know, for adults to be generous, and we live in a generous community, and that generosity is also highlighted on the town leagues. But I think it's also nice where everyone has the opportunity to get the equipment and there isn't that charity that's attached to it. So I just wanted to say that since we are a family who benefits from the kind of, you know, the equipment distribution, although we can afford to buy it. And that's it for me.
Jessica?
That's Dr. Wagner's comments about ensuring that coaches follow through with what happens after a concussion. Is there a liability form that they have to sign or something that holds them accountable for, to not exposing their players too soon?
Well, we have a clear process that we have to follow, from the testing to the actual event. And in order for a student to re-enter, they must be cleared by a medical, a trained medical provider. Coaches also have a handbook that, that we have that's consistent across the district that talks about their roles and responsibilities and following through on that. So that would be the piece, and yes, coaches do have to, to sign off on that, that they, they accept those responsibilities, that they're entrusted to the safety and delivering of the safety of our kids as well.
I have one last one coming to comment. I would hope we go further into saying, okay, you read it, sign off on it. I think we need a little better safeguard to make sure they really have looked at all of those materials and understand them.
And we do, we, I think it was a year or two ago that we actually went to a consistent handbook across the district for all of our coaches. And it's the expectation of our activity directors that they review those handbooks. You can't go through every single item, but they do a, and I, I feel they do a very good job of highlighting the areas that we know deal with liability, safety. So they have their coaches meetings, they go through those, they highlight them, they lay out the expectations, they have the, the coaches sign that they're willing to do that, they collect those to make sure we have those on file. So I think that would definitely be one that we would want to highlight, not just for football, but for, as you said, soccer and all of our other sports. There's always the risk of a head injury or any type of injury in all of our sports. So I think that's important.
And I think as the medical community learns more, I think we will learn more too about that.
All right, ready to vote.
Sandy? Becker?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Carried six-zero. Thank you, Kim and Mark and your team for all the work you've done to.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I move that the space availability for open enrollment be approved?
Second.
We had a discussion about this last week. Is there, are there any other questions? Okay, roll call, Sandy.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six-zero.
I move that the sixth to eighth grade school within a school for academically gifted learners, $110,000 be approved? Second.
Again, we discussed this quite a bit last week. Any new questions?
I just want to comment that I think we're also a place that we're moving ahead in this particular direction. It's, it's well, been well-needed for many of our students.
Yes.
If, if I'm not mistaken, and I see the principal is here, but there, there are a number of individuals who have already made significant inquiries to grow this program. And I think that the open houses that we held this last two set on Thursday, and I know that I got a report from Saturday, they were very well-attended. And people are very interested in the opportunities and programs that we are now affording students. So I just wanted to put that back.
All right, roll call, Sandy.
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried six-zero.
I move that the 20, 13, 14 school calendar be approved? Second.
Comments, questions? All right, roll call.
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carried six-zero.
We have one met or allowed by law. You mentioned the success of our first board engagement session. And that concludes our report.
All right, thank you, Katie. Do we need to take a break? Or, I don't know how long this, do you like a break? All right, we will take a break, come back at 7:25 on the dot. I'll call the meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda is our organizational support, which is facilitated by Chris Wagner.
Thank you very much. Under business items, we had no discussion items last week. And under human resources last week, we had discussion items of the employment process and employment process application, which I believe we all agreed should be a nice step forward from what we had this last year. I don't know whether there are any questions or comments about that from last week.
I guess, I guess I would just underscore a couple of points from last time. I think it's a, I think it's a good step forward, but until, until a role for seniority is somehow put into a written definition, that there isn't a, there isn't a formal definition of seniority in the process. And just, I guess, a couple ideas, then a, just a process question. I really feel pretty strongly that if there are, if there are five people of proper licensure within the district, I, I think that, it would be my opinion that one of those five must be chosen. And if there was someone from the outside, maybe that might have been a principal's choice more than all five of our most senior district employees, then I think you, I think you take one of, one of those. I think that's pretty generous. And if we have, if we have, like others have said too, if, if we really have five, our five most senior people in the district by licenses are all unqualified, then they're the problem far more serious than a, a building leader's choice. So I think, I think that would be, that would be one step. And I, and I do think it's more important, seniority is more important on the, you don't have a job side if we, hopefully don't, but if we were to come into that situation, I think that's far more important than I maybe don't have my first choice of, of job. The reality, but the reality is, I can think of almost no situation where I would think it would be okay to go out of seniority order for a flat-out workforce reduction within the same license. And certainly to me, coaching would be an insufficient reason to lay off someone more, more senior. My process question is, this is actually a very substantial, there are very substantial philosophical things in here. When, when are they, when do they actually receive board action? I mean, at, at some point, we all, including me, I think need to be accountable for what we're doing here. And I don't, I think it's way too high of a level to just, you know, informally discuss and talk about it and get some heads nodding around the table and move on. So what is the, the procedure?
That would be up to you. If you wish to bring it to a vote, you certainly can. The one thing I would say is that we are, this is still, we're still having a lot of in-depth discussions with various people on how this would work. I'd like to just talk about the definitions, and I think, Andrew, we will have to come up with a definition of seniority. We're talking about that because, you know, is it, is it district-wide seniority? Is it building seniority? Is it seniority within the bargaining unit? So I think in order to be clear with, you know, our, our leaders as well as staff, we have to define that, and we will. I, I also think that if we do, we will try very hard to select one of the top five candidates of the most senior who are qualified. of the most senior who are qualified with the proper licensure. And if that is not possible for some reason, we will bring Mark, Kim, Teri, Claudia, Michelle into the discussion so that the discussion goes, we have a very deep discussion about why we would not follow that. I would think in most cases we would. But if there would be an exception, I think we have to have a deeper conversation about that. But I think it would be up to the board if you'd like to vote. We will need some flexibility, though, in that document.
Well, I guess we need some flexibility in the document is where we've had some problems. And well-minded people sometimes, you know, could be out for a while, could win the lottery and disappear the next day. And excessive flexibility has gotten us in trouble. And I just don't, I really think if there's, not to belabor the point of the five, but I really think if the building leader is offered five interviews and isn't a fan of any of them, then I think they take the one they like the most out of the five. I mean, five's a lot.
If I may to, part of Andrew's point, there are some philosophical differences on this board about some of these issues. And it would behoove us to have a healthy discussion someplace along the line, just so we all know where we are in our rationale for those positions, and so we'd have a better understanding of ourselves and of each other.
I think that's a great idea.
I'm not saying you need a handbook vote every month, but I mean, is this part of the handbook process?
The level of detail you saw would not be in the handbook. This would be, this is more of an operational process, the more detailed how, two steps. So...
Well, then, that begs a question in my mind, because I agree. When do we vote or discuss that kind of thing?
Well, the handbook discussion will occur, we have a special meeting next week, Monday.
But the process, the actual, the landscape, that process, when do we do that? We've done it because of the changes we've made.
I don't recall if you voted, if we voted last year on that.
Yeah.
I think it was presented.
I believe it was presented and discussed, and people, and you were sitting, I think, in a different chair at that time.
Would that come under the, what's it called, the guiding change document? I mean, I'm looking for the governance in here, and normally as the governing board, we would not vote on operations. But there is that guiding change document that says...
I have that.
Here's the principle behind it.
On that middle part that says what we don't want, and those kinds of things.
I have that, and that was...
I mean, that could be something that we bring to the board table to discuss in our role as the governing body, as opposed to, you know, I mean, because that would then set the criteria that you would be working with when you set the operational documents that we're looking at right now.
The thing here with the, you know, the government management question here, if we were, you know, if we were spending, you know, serious board time other than a casual, you know, mention of a board member to Al or Dave on the side about the merits of the CRX 2947 copier versus the CRX 2945, okay, that's clearly management issue. We would set a maximum budget for copy machines and expect our people to do the best work here. When we talk about leaving flexibility on, you know, yes, you have to take the top five unless you have a strong reason, a very strong reason, and we don't plan to do it very often, that I think is clearly a matter of philosophy. And it's a question of does the, does the building, you know, can the building leader go outside of the top five? Can the superintendent go outside the top five? Or are we going to say, you know what, we are going to keep, we're going to keep some lines, we're going to keep some hard lines in place? Or are we not? I think we need to weigh in on.
I think that would be a board decision, but what we're trying to do here is to allow some decision-making on the building leader, that if they interview five candidates, and for some reason, they want to have a discussion with administration as to why they may want to go outside of the five candidates, we wanted to allow that to happen. Because what we're trying to do is, we're trying to not be completely seniority and not completely opening it up to any candidate. We're trying to figure out a way...
But if you can go outside the five, you're almost all the way on the spectrum.
We're just trying to give more voice to the principals, really. We really are trying to...
You know, if I could, when we think about the guiding change document, when you think about that place of, you know, it would be, seniority is a part that we would expect would be included in the process. I personally can't even envision what that exception would be if you had five highly-qualified individuals sitting in front of you that had what you needed in terms of not only licensure but skill sets and so forth. If there was a special skill set, I can see that you might not have someone who's trained, for example, in Project Lead the Way or International Baccalaureate or some of that. Then do you go outside for that? That's really the piece that I could see that you might bump into. But as far as if I'm looking at a first-grade teacher, and they all have literacy and they're all trained in elementary education, I can't even envision that we would have a lot of issues around that.
And some of it is the byproduct of customization. As you look at specialty areas in our high schools, there are special skill sets required, and you may or may not. Even though people might be licensed in a general area, if we're really looking to create customization. And that's where I get nervous with being, with having our hands tied.
Well, and I think, and I think too, this is why we need to have, this is why it cannot be completely up to the principals, because the job description cannot be written in such a way as to eliminate candidates that are already in existence. And then the art of this whole process, which I think Laurie and Dave Harris were kind of talking about, is what happens before the job becomes available? How are you training and educating and supporting the candidates all before the job becomes available? That's the other part of it that they talked about, that, I mean, I would welcome the conversation about, and keeping it, because I agree with you, it has to be governance. I don't want to be mucking and making, you know, formula for what is seniority. I think that's not going to work. But I think we do need to talk about, I think it's time for us to talk about this. I'm not sure I know my own mind 100% on this either.
I didn't necessarily mean, by the way, that you couldn't, although I think it's real, it should be a big-ticket item. IB trained, for example, IB training is difficult and expensive to go get. I think it's a little, but I can imagine it being taken too far, but that's why I'm presuming, you know, IB math teacher or a teaching position with two IB math sections or whatever, HR would be writing that job description or at least signing off on it, I hope. And then, okay, that's a posting with specialized requirements. As long as, like I was saying, you can't, I could easily come up, you know, just like I could easily make a convincing case if you gave me five resumes at random of certified teachers, I could tell you exactly why I had to have any one of the five. I'm sure I could write a job description that only allowed one of the five to get it, or none of the five if I wanted to, but within reason. You know, within reason, I think it's, I have no problem with that. I don't mean you just have to take the top five math teachers. But it's got to be, it's got to be within reason.
So how do we have this conversation and not gum up your process?
Well, I think it would be, I mean, we could do that at a separate time, or, you know, I could...
I was just thinking it would be a good labor management discussion, but not everyone's there, so that won't work. You know, as I think about it, and in the reality from last year, just putting this out there, beyond the one situation where seniority wasn't there, were there others? And that's the piece I've asked, and I don't know that anybody's provided me with that answer. So I would really like to know, because I truly believe that we spent a fair amount of time last year wanting to adhere to and be respectful of people who were currently employees in our district before seeking outside. And I don't recall more than one situation that was very close to starting.
Well, I do know that there were times when principals were contacted and requested to take internal candidates.
And I know they did.
And they did. And I think that people understand and value our internal candidates, and I, you know, I don't know the number and all the examples.
But I'm just thinking, are we in a place where we're spending a tremendous amount of time discussing something that we've managed well? And there might have been one outlier. Do you see what I'm saying? That's all.
Something that you and you and you have managed well, but the consequences of which I would argue are severe on staff morale if we have even once, I think it made ripples to go outside of the five.
But I recognize...
If there was, if there was a rule of five, of people need the posting requirements, then that one wouldn't have happened and the ripples wouldn't have been made.
Or would it have been that the internal candidates were included first? And that didn't occur in that order either?
Right.
I mean, there are some other ways to address that.
Yes.
So did you have an idea for bringing this forward?
Well, if the board wanted to set a meeting to talk about this and go through the document in more detail, and, you know, you've seen it now, so you can formulate questions.
I question holding everything up, the work around now.
Yeah, I don't want to do that.
I don't think that's appropriate right now. I do think all of this is worthy of more discussion among us to get ourselves where we all are with it, okay? And, you know, I guess, you know, is there such things, a fail-safe system here? I don't know.
No, I think we're, by several people's admissions from several different camps, we are in a much better place than we were a year ago at this time. And I think we need to let what you're putting forward work, see how it works, but now that it, again, is not written as stone, and that we need to, and I think there is that sense that's recognized, and that feedback is welcome. But I don't know that we need to schedule a time that we can beat this to death, you know, give it a chance to work, and then tweak it as we go along.
I think because no one will be making these important decisions in isolation. We have checks and balances where we have our executive directors, and, you know, Kim and Michelle, if they need to get involved, will get involved. So we're going to be more vigilant about trying to recognize some of the more difficult situations when we have them to make in terms of offering positions. And that's, you know, I think that will help.
I think we're starting to beat this to death right now at this point, and Andrew continues to have those concerns, and I think we need to continue to look at those concerns. So if we may, we're going to move on to action items. There are none in the business and finance area. Action items under human resources include, the first one being the contract for the 2013-14 and the 2014-15 school years for the superintendent of schools and learning as presented be approved.
Second.
I don't believe there's any discussion.
Roll call. Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Next recommendation is that the executive secretary to the manager of school and community relations job description as presented be approved.
Second.
Any comments?
Andrew has a...
Oh, go ahead.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to support this as amended. This is a case where there's a good idea of having a person with two responsibilities, I think. And in the future, if it makes sense for one of them, one of those to become full-time or something, we certainly can. But I wanted, whoever's going in there should have the protections as other staff. If there were to be workforce reduction, if a department were to change, that they would, that they would have that. And that was really important with the idea that if you didn't, if you didn't put it in writing, it didn't happen. I'll say that anytime, and I appreciate the consideration, the amendment.
Anything else? Roll call, Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Next recommendation is that the executive secretary to the district equity coordinator job description as presented be approved.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Next recommendation is that the change to the employee handbook section dealing with emergency call and pay and additional hours and overtime approval and assignment as presented be approved.
Second.
Is there something you want to say on that?
There isn't really anything new to this one. It is, again, just to recap, it's to allow our employees who are on, are called in for emergencies to receive time and a half, even if they haven't worked the full 40 hours in the week. And this is something that we discussed with the union, and they support that, obviously. We had a few people plow snow with the previous snowfall, and we will do back pay for them if the board would approve this. And it also would include people who are working outside their normal hours to perform other emergency duties. And this will be determined by the district, by the supervisors, as to what that would be, so...
Any questions, concerns?
Roll call, Sandy?
Franz?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
And the last, next to last recommendation is that the change to the employee handbook section dealing with funeral leaves, funeral leave as presented be approved.
Second.
We provided you with the striked-out version and also the clean version. And what this change would allow us to do is be flexible with an employee so that if they needed to split their funeral leave or defer funeral leave, we would be able to do that. It also has a provision that if an employee submits a written request to extend the leave beyond the three or the one day for certain reasons, it would give, it gives HR the authority to do that. I think that was already in there. Also add a domestic partner as a person who would qualify, you know, to, for the employee to be able to take funeral leave for. That wasn't in there, or that's something we added that we heard from our employees.
I'm sorry, roll call, Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Last recommendation is that the consent items as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions, comments on those? Roll call, Sandy?
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero. We have our February board meetings listed, and then are there any other matters allowed by law?
I have one.
Actually, one of the, thank you, Jean. One of the young men who had come, who was a Boy Scout, he's trying to make his Eagle Scout, yes. And he actually helped us out at the Wildlife Sanctuary Playground. And this is what he did. He's my neighbor too, so, young man, high school student. So he coordinated the project to basically work on the tree stumps and the split rail fence, that's not it, the split rail fence out at the Wildlife Sanctuary to help improve the playground. He got 15 friends, scouts, and family members to help him do everything on his proposal list to clean out brush, dig out stumps. He worked 12 days last October, November, and he did actually submit a sketch. So I just wanted to recognize the young man who is in the community, his family, actually there, they've lived in this community for, I think, I think, like 100 years. And interestingly, they're... and pathways for students, Amanda has been working with an outside agency to put together this commercial that will be aired on television at different points in time. And when we originally looked at it, you couldn't see the icons for the high school, so they readjusted so you can see all of our icons on the bottom that we can customize for the different schools.
I like the fact that the Wildcats are first.
The Wildcats are first. So in this, and as we move forward-
It's on a revolving basis.
It's on a revolving basis.
At this moment.
Thank you, thanks for clarifying that. We have a 30-second version and a 15-second version. It's very quick.
It goes by very fast.
Quick look.
It's not synced. It's a projector. Sorry.
The sound, you mean?
Oh.
Yeah.
That's okay.
It's played in your head.
Sorry, I thought- There's something between the system and the internet.
All right. So if you want to see it on the computer. Are there any other matters law by law? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The board's, right, meeting is adjourned.
For more information or to obtain copies of this program, contact CISA 7 Interactive Learning Services at 920-465-5218.